The League of Women Voters of Cupertino-Sunnyvale presents City Council Candidate Forum 2009, featuring the seven candidates running for Cupertino City Council. And now, for tonight's moderator, Roberta Holloman.
Good evening, and welcome to tonight's forum. I am Roberta Holloman, and this forum is brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Cupertino-Sunnyvale. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization interested in the informed participation of citizens in government. The League neither supports nor opposes candidates running for public office. Tonight's forum is for Cupertino City Council. There are seven candidates. They are running for three seats, so you have a chance to vote for three candidates. We will start with the candidates and their two-minute opening statement. So we'll start with Barry Chang.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the forum, and I want to special thanks to League of Women Voters for hosting this event. This election is very important. You will decide the direction what this city should go. Shall we put Cupertino first, or shall we put special interest groups first? If your answer is the same as mine, put Cupertino first, then please vote for me. I'm number one on your ballot, and I will be keeping number one of Cupertino's best interests in mind. I was elected twice on Cupertino School Board, served eight years, and also served four years on Public Safety Commissions. When I was on Cupertino School Board, I did two things that I'm very proud of it. I stopped the sale of the surplus school site to developer, which prevented the overcrowded condition in our school. And also, I stopped the building of the administration office, because I believe the money should go to the classroom, not in the administration office. Of course, I offended a lot of people I did not know until two years ago when I ran, but I learned it. Public health and safety is my number-one concern, okay? So shall we protect our residents' health by monitoring the de-high cement plant's air pollution? Shall we find a solution to solve our traffic congestion around our schools? Shall we keep our park safe for all residents to enjoy it? So if your answer is yes, please vote for me. I'm number one on your ballot, and as I say, I will keep Cupertino's best interests in the number-one position. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I forgot to mention that we do have a timer in the front row for all of you to see when your time is going to be up. Our next candidate is Orin Mahoney.
Good evening. My name is Orin Mahoney, and I have the honor and privilege of being the mayor of Cupertino this year. As a resident, parent, and volunteer in Cupertino for over forty years, I know the importance of maintaining our superior quality of life. As mayor, I'm proud that the city of Cupertino is thriving. Financially, we remain strong despite a very tough financial environment. Our key large employers are doing better than their competitors, and our residents enjoy the finest city services. But our task is far from done. We must work hard to keep our major employers healthy and our small business community vibrant, for their success is what allows us to enjoy the best schools and superior city services. Our civic life has improved over the last four years with the addition of key trail and recreational facilities such as the Mary Avenue Bridge and the Blackberry Farm renovation. Several positive retail projects were approved, including one with the potential to create a town square environment for people to shop, eat, and play. These projects were achieved all while addressing the key concerns of neighbors and community groups. Again, there is work to be done. We need to work together to help Cupertino Square achieve its full potential. New parks planned for the eastern area of the city need to be completed, and the Stevens Creek Trail extended from Blackberry Farm to Stevens Creek Boulevard. In last year's resident survey, ninety-three percent of our residents were satisfied or very satisfied with city services. Fifty-seven percent very satisfied. These accomplishments were only achieved through the team effort of our city staff, my fellow council members, the business community, and an active and engaged citizenry. I believe my business, community, and civic contributions have given me the understanding necessary to help create an even better Cupertino over the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. And next candidate, Marty Miller.
Good evening. My name is Marty Miller. My wife and I have raised our family in Cupertino for the last thirty years. I've been a chair and member of the Planning Commission for seven years. I have many years of management experience in Silicon Valley, in marketing and finance. My education includes an MBA and two engineering degrees. I've been a community advocate for many years and successfully advocated for Cupertino's first no-smoking ordinance. As a planning commissioner, I facilitated neighborhood issue resolution in the Blue Pheasant area, Oak Valley, Lynnwood Acres, and the Regnart Creek area. I support transparent government and proactive planning to protect our schools from overdevelopment. Our city currently faces some major challenges. Property values are declining, and our schools are struggling. General fund expenditures exceeded income for the past three years in Cupertino, and another shortfall is projected. The city has roughly fifty-four million in debt and spends 3.5 million a year in debt payments. Two-thirds of the city's sales tax revenues come from just three business-to-business tax producers, which is a significant revenue risk. These are the facts. I found them in this year's adopted budget. To ensure the city's long-term fiscal stability requires a focus on revitalizing our business districts. It's important to make Apple's second campus successful. It's equally important to improve our underperforming retail centers to broaden our revenue base. Priorities must also be reordered. Infrastructure maintenance has been cut to an all-time low over the last few years. Yet the city spent $2 million on a little-used walking bridge over 280. Addressing street scape deterioration and lack of attention to safety issues such as speeding near school sites and in our neighborhoods must increase in importance. Protecting our schools and property values and stabilizing our finances for the future are my priorities. Thank you.
And Daniel Nguyen? Are you next? I'm sorry.
You missed me. I'm so short.
Well, I alphabetize them correctly, but since we're sitting this way, I'll call on Mahesh Nihalani.
Thank you. Good evening, dear friends and neighbors. My name is Mahesh Nihalani. I'd like to first thank the League of Women Voters for having organized this forum, and thank you all for finding this time, your valuable time, to come and be with us today. Together, we have built this beautiful community called Cupertino, a place where we live, work, and raise our families. Today, in these most challenging economic times, we must work hard to maintain our quality of life. Our city provides vital services our citizens deserve and expect. Because I care about our town and people, I have decided to put my experience and skills to work for Cupertino by running for the city council. As your council member, I will work hard to keep jobs in Cupertino and support opportunity, innovation, and growth for our major employers. This will preserve and enhance the quality of life for our residents and neighborhoods. I'll also introduce a healthy partnership between the city and our small business community. I will manage the city's resources with sound fiscal leadership that ensures a balanced budget. My vision for Cupertino also includes strong support of public safety, balance and smart growth with emphasis on affordable housing, more open space, reduced traffic congestion around schools, focus on youth and senior programs, and a green and clean city. My wife Kamal and I have seen our sons graduate from our excellent schools, and I will continue to work with our city to be more supportive of our schools and enhance this relationship further. In the short span of nine years, I have been an active participant in every aspect of the Cupertino community. From leadership Cupertino in 2002, I have served as a block leader and emergency response team volunteer, chair of the Cupertino Housing Commission, Asian American Business Council, board member of Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, and also on the Senior Center Advisory Council. I have also been active in many educational, civic, and culturally organizations, and I have honored to receive the Community Bridge Award, the Asian Hero Award, the Crest Award, and the Citizen of the Year Award, and also the Rotarian of the Year Award. I am experienced and ready to serve as your council member. So please vote for me in the upcoming elections. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we'll go to Daniel Nguyen.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Nguyen, and it's my honor to announce to you my candidacy for Cupertino City Council. I'm a true native of our city. Out of all my fellow candidates here, I'm the only one who grew up in Cupertino. I went to our local public schools, Garden Gate, Kennedy, and Montevista. After that, I went to UCLA for both my undergraduate degree in statistics and my master's degree in biostatistics. I currently serve as vice chair of the city's Public Safety Commission, and I also work full-time at the Veterans Hospital up in Menlo Park, doing research for clinical trials. In my spare time, I'm a member of the CERT team, the Community Emergency Response Team, where I serve as both a leader and an instructor. I'm also a Cupertino Rotarian, and in my spare time, I tutor part-time for high school math and science students, and I also play bridge. I'm running for Cupertino City Council because I want to protect the three core values that make Cupertino a great place to live and raise a family. The first one is fiscal responsibility. If we want to find a way to pay for our city services and make sure that we balance the books, we have to find a way to pay for them. And the best way to do that is to attract more businesses into our city and make sure that we revitalize our retail spaces such as Cupertino Square. Second is public safety. Cupertino is a very safe place to live and a very safe place to grow up, but if the budget gets tight, we have to make sure that we never take that safety for granted. I will make sure that we never jeopardize public safety in the interest to save a few dollars here and there. Finally, is our small-town character. Cupertino is a great place to live because we have a small-town atmosphere and a suburban character. I want to make sure that we maintain that and protect our city against overdevelopment such as the monstrosities we have at Stevens Creek and Deansah. Over the next two hours, I hope to be able to earn your votes and be able to respond to any questions that are of your concern in the community, and thank you very much for coming here.
Thank you. Darcy Paul.
Hi, I'm Darcy Paul. I grew up in Kansas, just like Superman. And I actually went to elementary, middle school, and high school there. After I graduated from secondary school, I went out east to Harvard College, where I was a pre-medical student, and ended up going to law school there as well. And the primary reason I decided to come to Cupertino was to practice in the field of technology law. And I think that in terms of what my core competency is and how I can offer a different kind of thinking and approach to Cupertino, I want to share with you a little bit about the idea that the diamond is really in the details here. I don't think anybody sitting on this stage right now actually wants to do anything that is willfully harmful to Cupertino. But I do think that there are approaches and thinking patterns that would be potentially more beneficial to the city. I'm running primarily because I think that of the seven candidates, I'm at least one of the three that can serve the city well. And with respect to a few of the ideas that have been mentioned so far on the dais so far, I'd like to key in on three. One is the cement factory. Now, the cement factory is actually outside of city space, and technically, we don't have jurisdiction over it. However, the real question is, how can we go and do something about this problem in the community? Well, I spoke to one of my colleagues who's an EPA lawyer, and what we can do is actually challenge the Title V re-licensing if it actually gets granted. So it's those types of ideas that I really want to help share with the community. I view this as strictly a public service, and I hope that over the course of the debate, we'll really be able to flesh out some of these ideas. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Mark Santoro.
Hi, I'm Mark Santoro. I've been in your city council for about the last year and a half. Filled a partial seat vacated by Patrick Quoc, which allowed me to become on the council and actually allowed Orin to become mayor and rotate into that position. I'm running again for the same reason I ran the first time. It's a difficult job. It's very time-consuming. I put a lot of time and effort into it, and I did a lot of soul-searching, but I ran in the first place for one simple reason. I believe in the United States, we're a government of, by, and for the people, and I think in Cupertino, we need to do a better job on the "for the people" part. I think it's gotten a little better since I've been in the council, but I still think we have a long way to go. I think that we've come a little bit. If I look, there's a lot more people in this room than there were two years ago, and I think that's a great sign. When I talk to people on the street, they seem to be a little bit more involved in the government than they were before. My biggest goal is to get the people of Cupertino to be part of this government, so that the city council, the city staff, and the people all work together. I think that's very important, and that's my number-one goal. People last time accused me of being a one-issue candidate, but they missed the issue. That was my issue. I'm a big believer in open and transparent government. I think we should know exactly what our government is doing, so all of us can watch it, and I believe we can do a lot better in terms of that. I've pushed for a higher-speed bandwidth to the internet. I've pushed for putting things like the road repair list on the internet, so we can all see what's going on. So I believe we should all know what's going on, and a lot more of us can watch and see what our government's doing. I've done a lot of things while I've been in office, but what I've always tried to do is listen to the people and represent everyone here. I don't take any endorsements from other political people. I don't take any funds or raise any money from developers or any special interest groups. I'm here just to serve you, the people of Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you. So now, we've heard from the candidates. We'll take our five-minute break. If you need to have a card to write a question, raise your hand, and someone will come and bring you a card. And when your question is written, raise your hand again, and they'll pick up your cards. So, five minutes.
Should we step here?
Well, as long as you get back, it's okay. We come to the question part of the evening, and you have submitted many, many, really, really good questions, so we're going to try to get to as many as we can. We will be combining some questions because they're all on the same subject, and that way, we can get around to more subjects. So now, I have to find my first question. Number one.
You want my first question?
And so, let me do this one. What do you think, what do you feel is the most important issue you will immediately face if you are re-elected? And I will be calling on you in a random order, and since there are seven candidates, if somewhere along the line you aren't sure what the question was, you can ask me to repeat it. Let me get out my little cheat sheet here. And we will start with Daniel Nguyen. Let me repeat the question. What do you feel is the most important issue you will immediately face if you are re-elected?
Elected or re-elected.
Elected. Or re-elected, depending.
I have to first get elected first, right?
Okay, go ahead.
I think the biggest challenge our city faces is revitalizing our retail sector. We're hemorrhaging retail businesses right now. Cupertino Square is in complete disarray, and we depend on the sales tax generated at those retail places in order to pay for our vital city services. The program that I want to push for is what I like to call Shop Cupertino. I want to encourage both our residents and our visitors to patron our local restaurants and our local businesses. For our residents, my rationale is that by shopping in Cupertino, some of the sales tax that you pay there gets recirculated back into city services. So if you're going to go drink a Starbucks, why not do it in Cupertino as opposed to a neighboring city? It's about the same amount of distance, but some of that money comes back to the city. For visitors, for example, people who come to watch our shows or come to our city to visit, I want to encourage them to also shop in Cupertino and develop partnerships to make sure that we advertise what we have available in our city. It's imperative that we make sure that our residents have a place to shop within our city, instead of having to go to another city outside of our city limits where we lose that tax revenue.
Okay, thank you. Mahesh?
Can we just repeat that question, please?
Yes, I will. If I can find it.
What will be the first issue?
Here we go. I got it, I got it. No, I don't have it.
What will be the first issue?
I found it. I've got here. What do you feel is the most important issue you will immediately face if you are elected?
From what I have been hearing over the last month and a half, two months, is the most important issue probably in the minds of citizens, which I will face when I get elected to the city council, is the dog park. And my views and comments on this are as such, that I primarily believe and advocate safety of our seniors, our children, and our citizens in the parks and elsewhere in Cupertino. And we've had a very strong record of public safety, and I'd like to pursue that and make that stay for a long time to come. And I feel that responsible dog owners should also have a right to bring their dogs out, but I feel that, you know, we should have some kind of a fenced environment as a dog park where the dogs can be let off-leash inside there. I have heard from our citizens that even for our kids, they have an enclosed skateboard park, because we don't have that in Cupertino as yet. But if you relate that and say that we have to have an enclosed skateboard park, then we should have a fenced dog park for the dogs. So accommodate everybody.
Thank you. All right. Audience, please, please, please. It's better if we don't have reactions from the audience. It helps us get through the program a lot faster. So will you please hold your applause? You can tell the candidate afterwards how you appreciate their positions. Okay, now, the next person is going to be Barry Chang.
The most important issue facing our city right now is the air pollution from the cement plant, number one. Number two is the sea park issue. The dog park issue is real, and it's very divisive. It's not healthy for the entire city. The third one is the congestion, the traffic congestion around our school. We got to find a solution, but the current city council, in my opinion, on those three issues are pretty much doing nothing. Doing nothing is not going to solve the problem. The health issue, no. Four days ago, at the hearing at Quinlan Center from Bay Area Air Quality Management District, the Senator Medical Association went over there, expressed their oppose the renewal of Title V permit. I was the only candidate, spoke against it. Out of seven candidates, no one went there, spoke about it. Don't you think that's important? It's hurting our health. The breast cancer, the women's breast cancer rate in this area, in Bay Area, is higher than nation, okay? The autism rate in our school is almost double in the county. There must be some reason. And then also, breast cancer is very interesting. They did this study about the Asian woman, especially Chinese-American woman. It's five times higher in Bay Area than in Shanghai or in Taipei. The same person, must be the environment. Then what do we do? What our city government do? Nothing. It's a health issue. This is very important.
Thank you. Time's up. Mark Santoro.
Well, the first issue is going to be that we'll probably rearrange the seats on the dais, and that's always tricky. After that, the most important issue that I believe we'll be facing once again are the citizens of Cupertino. There's lots of issues that come and go. There's development projects that come and go. There's the dog park issue. There's always a hot issue, and you can always pick one during this time and say, this is the issue we should all be talking about. What we should be looking at is, what issues are we going to see two years from now, three years from now, ten years from now? Are the leaders of your community doing the right thing to make sure that Cupertino's in the right place for the future? And I think the only way you do that is you do your homework, you listen to the people that you're working for, you know who you're working for, and you try to do right by all of your citizens. I think the citizens of Cupertino are the most important issue.
Thank you. Darcy Paul.
Well, I think a lot of important issues have been raised by the other candidates, but if I were to pick one single issue that I think most affects us in terms of our long-term impact and viability, that's the local economy. And I think that what we really need is good thinking with respect to how to fill up our empty office spaces around town. There's a good amount of talk regarding how we should develop in the future, but this is Cupertino. It's the tech center of arguably the world, and having grown up in the middle of the United States, you know, even I in Kansas knew about that. But with respect to how we can address other issues, I really think that we need to come up with good initiatives. Green technology is a very, very hot item right now, and if we can come up with an idea to bring an industry consortium in the green sector to Cupertino, I think that solves a lot of our problems. It is important to have retail thriving here, but I think saying that we're going to concentrate exclusively on retail first kind of puts the cart before the horse. I think it's very important that we think about the cement factory, but I also think we need to be realists about what the political outcome is going to be and what we can feasibly do. We need representation on the board of the Bay Area Quality Management, and that's something that I'll push for. And with respect to school congestion, I think we need a school busing system as well as more public transit options. But more than anything else, we really need to promote the local economy. Thanks.
Thank you. Orin Mahoney?
Yeah, well, Mahesh stole my thunder with the off-leash dog issue. That will be probably the most immediate issue that people are going to face unless it's kind of settled by then. And I think that's good news. If that's the biggest issue that Cupertino is facing right now, that says something about the overall position of the city and where we are. On a serious note, I think that the biggest issue that we're going to face is Main Street Cupertino. That's a project that we approved. It's a nice project. It has a lot of benefits to the city, including a town square, but they're having challenges, surprise, surprise, in this current economic environment, getting people that want to move into some of the new spaces that they're doing. So I think they're going to be coming back to us with some ideas to move some things around, make sure that it works for some of the tenants that they're trying to attract. I think we can do something there to help move that along, and I think it's important. I think Cupertino Square, there's not a lot we can do there from a city point of view, except, you know, be a cheerleader or whatever. Unlike other cities, we do not pay businesses to move into Cupertino, whether it be commercial office people or retail. We just don't do that. We've been fortunate not to have to do that, but there are some things we can do to make it easy for them here.
Thank you. And Daniel Nguyen?
I spoke already.
Marty.
Marty.
I'm sorry. My numbers.
Please don't forget me.
Marty Miller.
Thank you. I also think the most important issue is the local economy and its impact on our finances and hence on our ability to provide the kinds of services, basic services and other services that the city needs. This is an issue that has two sides. One is the revenue side, and the other is the cost side. On the cost side, I think there's more that the city can do in the way of efficiency and being, cutting costs in terms of city government. I've spent some time in government positions, and I understand that there are lots of areas to cut, and I believe that's the same with Cupertino. On the revenue side, it's clear to me that the retail area is the major area where we can make strides, not only in increasing our revenue, but broadening our revenue base so we're not so dependent on one or two or three single sources of revenue in this city. Just as an example, Valco or Cupertino Square is currently generating $1.1 million in revenue a year. By comparison, Oak Ridge Mall generates $5.4 million. There's a lot we can do in terms of collaborating with our property owners and offering incentives to the kinds of businesses that we'd like to see in Cupertino to come here. We are already offering incentives to some companies that are here today, and there's no reason why we can't expand that program and work with our landowners, and Main Street is another example, to help them bring tenants in and make those projects happen. Thank you.
Okay. Did we get everybody?
Yes.
Good. All right. Now, we're starting with, we're continuing with question number two. I have six questions on this one topic, so I'm going to try to combine them and ask you to address all of these concerns, and it's already been raised by several of the candidates. It has to do with Lehigh Southwest Cement Company. And the concerns are about dust and pollution and expansion and air pollution, and those seem to be, oh, but one more. The city of Cupertino is getting all the negative byproducts of Lehigh, but no benefits, financial or otherwise. Wouldn't the city benefit more by developing those 3,600 acres into homes? Okay. Can you answer all of those issues? And we're going to start this time with Daniel Nguyen.
Sorry, can you repeat the question again? Or the individual parts?
Okay, here are the issues. Dust, air pollution, expansion, and would it be better to develop the 3,600 acres into homes as a financial benefit to the city?
Okay. The cement plant is outside of the city limits, but even though it's inside county pockets, it's still within our city's sphere of influence. Because of that, we have some leverage and influence in what decisions are made for that project. that, we have some leverage in, and influence in what decisions are made for that project. It's imperative that if we continue to allow the cement plant to operate, that the city has to obtain some sort of benefit from all the inconveniences that our residents have to put up with. Whether it's an increase in tax revenue, whether it's some other concession, our city needs to have some sort of exchange so that we're not simply taking, you know, taking negatives without getting anything in return.
Okay. Orin Mahoney.
Yeah, so, you know, this issue's been around for a long time. I've lived in Cupertino 40 years. When I first moved here, the cement plant was already here, surprise, surprise. And over that time, as the pollution controls have become stricter and stricter, they've met them as they go along. So I'm not going to take the easy road here and bash them. I live up that way. I'm not personally concerned at all about health issues. I base my health issues on data, not on anecdotal types of information. We have explored as a city, changing the relationship up there so that we can get some financial benefits, but that didn't work out. There were some trade-offs involved, including some potential future development if and when the cement, the material runs out. So I think we want to work with everybody to make sure that they are meeting every standard that they have to meet, and I think we want to work with them. One thing I'm doing right now is, there's, the water district is thinking of putting a huge detention pond up there, which would have 1,000 trucks take dirt out, not at the cement plant, but down below. And I'm trying to work on getting that dirt put up as part of the reclamation project for the cement plant to take 1,000 trucks off the road in that neighborhood and keep them up there, just move the dirt up there. So I think we can work constructively within the constraints of what we're allowed to do to make things better there.
Darcy Paul.
Well, I think, again, the really critical parts are in the details here. I think what we really need to do is, as Cupertino have better representation on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, currently there are 22 directors on that, on that board that decides whether to reissue these Title V licenses every five years. And out of those 22 people, not a single one of those people is a resident of Cupertino. So with respect to getting our concerns better addressed there and a specific detail for making sure that our interests are served, what I would do is push in any way that I can on council to make sure that at least one or two of our residents are represented on that board. With respect to what happened last Thursday over at Quinlan, there's a Title V license process in which every five years, the cement plant actually has to get reapproval. And that approval comes from the same district with the 22 directors. Now, specifically, we just don't have leverage with respect to whether that approval takes place. But what you can do as a citizen of Cupertino is write your local congressman, Mike Honda, and encourage him to go ahead and tell the EPA to revisit the granting of that license. So it's those types of recommendations that I would really try to push for, tangible concrete, and hopefully, I hope that you believe they're thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mahesh Neelani.
As I think we've all heard from the last five candidates here, the cement plant is not part of the Cupertino city jurisdiction. It's a county jurisdiction property and business. But being a concerned citizen and concerned about the people out here, I would definitely, you know, be on top of things to make sure that this unit meets all the regulatory compliances that are necessary. I also understand that the EPA is coming out with new norms to conduct, you know, investigations and tests and everything. And once those are in place, we'll stay on top of that to make sure that the cement plant does meet all those new and mandatory regulatory norms that are required. And I think once, once we go through that, and we can also, you know, like I said, you know, have some kind of a representation on the Bay Area Quality Management from somebody in Cupertino, and that's got to be done as things happen. But keeping in mind that all these regulatory norms that are met are within the parameters of what the norms laid out are in terms of requirement, we will still stay on top of this to work with the cement plant to see. And if necessary, and if the county feels that, and I will also, you know, work with the Board of Supervisors to make sure that is ensured. And if at all we still feel that the cement plant is not meeting those regulations, then it'll be closed then. Thanks.
Thank you. Mark Santoro.
So I've been tracking what's going on up there for some time. I've had meetings with the old owners. I've had meetings with the new owners. I'm encouraged that the new owners seem to be more positive about at least saying that they're going to look out for the air quality and that they're going to put more things into place to look out for all of us. Everyone should know, by the way, that there's not only a cement plant up there, but there's also a Stevens Creek Quarry. So when the rocks drip off the back of the thing and hit your truck, you're always trying to figure out which one. It's convenient for them to point fingers at each other, but there are two entities up there. I am keeping an eye on what's going on. I was the only elected official. It was kind of embarrassing at the last meeting last Thursday, talking about the Title V license. I did, when I met with the managers, by the way, I politely asked them if they'd like to be annexed into Cupertino, and they smiled and politely said no. But it's worth a try. There, something everyone should be aware of, there are some tighter regulations on the horizon, especially for mercury and other heavy metals. And if those things do go into effect, then they will have to follow those rules, even if they're granted the Title V now. So I think that the biggest obligation is for everyone here. If you care, it's, you know, you need to write the people at the County Board of Supervisors and your higher-elected officials to get them to do something about it. We can put about as much pressure on them here locally as you can. In fact, you may be able to put more, so I encourage you all to do so if you think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Miller.
Excuse me. I think that, as a number of the candidates have said, this is an issue that we, we can all work on. And as a community, we want to make sure that they're meeting all the regulations. Mahesh mentioned that the EPA is coming out with some new regulations that specifically relates to mercury, which I know is a concern of citizens. And the mercury standards, I believe, are going to get a lot tougher, and the cement plant is going to have to work hard in order to, in order to meet those standards. If there, I'd look into what other impacts they're having. If they're having impacts on our roads, then we should seek remuneration, for the cost of repairing those roads. And again, if there is issues with health, I would vigorously look into solutions and bring in whoever is needed to do that. I did want to answer also the question of, should we convert it into homes? I think that's a terrible idea. Those, that's the hillsides. We in Cupertino have always cherished our hillsides and wanted to protect them. And the last thing we need to do is put more homes up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Chang.
I disagree with Marty. Put a home is better than the cement plant, in my opinion. And then there's a lot of things we can do. It's not the attitude here, you can hear, do nothing. We don't get a penny out of that cement plant. A penny, at all. But then they're using our road. They come in at 5 o'clock in the morning. Some of the residents told me that their wake-up call, wake-up alarm. So we can put a restriction on the hours of the truck service, heavy truck service, not in the 5 o'clock in the morning. Also, 5 o'clock in the morning also produce the dust, the diesel exhaust. We inhale those dust, those bad air, number one. Number two, they're using our road. We're paying for it. We should impose the road impact fee. Ask them to pay for it, because they're a heavy truck. And so, see, like, where I live, I pass on, pass by Regna Road. There's not a pajo on that road. Because, I mean, the money is to spend somewhere, but if we don't get any penny, and then they're using it, why not impose? Last, on the monitor of the mercury, of the air. They don't have a central stack. They're one of the three antiquated ones. That even Senator medical association say there's no way, or almost impossible to know how much mercury they emit to the air, and we inhale it every day. You talk to the people living around that area?
Thank you.
They all have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Right now, we come to another question that many of you have addressed already, but we'll ask you to address it again. The off-leash dog issue and sports field create impacts for immediate neighbors of our parks, particularly with noise and traffic. While neighbors can't control the use of public spaces, how will you give fair representation to neighbors when a change to existing use is considered? There is no effective system of community notification and outreach today. And I think that covers all the questions on the second card. So, do you have the question, or do you want me to repeat it?
I have the question.
Anybody want it repeated?
Yes, please.
Okay. The off-leash dog issue and sports field create impacts for immediate neighbors of our parks, particularly with noise and traffic. While neighbors can't control the use of public spaces, how will you give fair representation to neighbors when a change to existing use is considered? There is no effective system of community notification and outreach today. And we're going to start with Mark Santoro.
Okay, just backing in a little bit, in terms of community notification, there was a postcard sent to everybody in town. Some people don't notice them, but they were sent. They've been in the papers and stuff. And I think we need a better system. The council actually discussed citywide email notices that were, want to try to get some of us, who are proponents of anyway, to get all of you to sign up to do that. I'd like to say a few things on the dogs. There's a lot of misconceptions, and I'd like to state my position. I believe what we're doing today doesn't work. We need to do a better job. People are being exposed to loose dogs in parks off-lead all the time. A lot of people complain about it. They're complaining about dog waste. That's a problem. I was the one council member that proposed the blue tag process, which says your dog needs to be licensed, and you have a rabies shot, you need to be a resident of Cupertino, and your dog has to be able to follow voice commands to be able to participate in this trial we're looking at. The trial was proposed by a citizens group that was formed by the council. A lot of them got up there and put their names on it. The citizens group recommended the trial. It would not have been my top pick of the four parks. Areas are trying, but they recommended it. I'm also the council member who went in and talked to the staff to look for other ways of enforcing them, and we just passed a rule that allows a lot more people, including animal control, to write citations for dogs that are off-leads or people not picking up poop. So I believe enforcement's a really important part of this. I believe we need to look out for the safety of our people. But I'm also an animal lover, and I believe that the dogs do need a place. Whether it's fenced or unfenced, I don't care, but they need a place. Thank you.
Mahesh Neelani.
Like I said earlier, my concern is basically the safety of our people, whether it's in the parks or elsewhere. And I also feel that responsible dog owners should also have, you know, should be allowed to have their dogs walk around and, you know, be exercised. And I feel that a fenced dog park would be an appropriate solution to this. So both sides get accommodated. As far as the outreach to the citizens is concerned, I am absolutely for. I'm a people's person, and I believe that prior to taking any decision, the council or the city should send out adequate time information for people's input on whether something should be carried out or not. And I maintain that always, and I will always try and enforce that and have my colleagues in the council agree to those kind of things. Thanks.
Marty Miller.
With respect to notification, being on the planning commission, also being aware of what the council does, the city has made great strides, I think, in making sure that people are notified. And then on major issues, major community issues, there is the option of doing a community-wide noticing mailers. And whenever there's a major issue in town, the city, in fact, does do those mailings. If that is still not reaching people, I would like to know about it, and we'll continue to work on notification, because I think that notification and disclosure is very important, and we want to continue to improve. In terms of the dog issue itself, what I see here is that there is an issue in town in terms of, apparently, for many, many years, people have been letting their dogs off-leash, and it's been uncontrolled. And so what I see this trial as doing is trying to put some controls in place to fix this problem. Now, I also believe probably the best solution would be a fenced-in dog park. I know that a number of inquiries have been made with respect to that, and everybody agrees there should be a fenced-in dog park, as long as it's in some other part of town. And, you know, I will continue to press for a fenced-in dog park and see if we could reach some agreement there. But if not, then that's the reason for looking at off-leash. It's reasonable that both, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping with the time. Daniel Nguyen.
So I think there are two parts to this question. The first part is, do we give more weight, more influence to residents who live close to the area that will be affected? I think we should, and I think we should do that in two ways. The first way is, what is being done with the trial period right now? The survey that will be conducted will only survey households that are within 1,500 feet of affected parks. I think we need that type of radius to make sure that residents who live by those parks have more say. Secondly, during public hearings, if I'm elected, I would like to know around what area speakers live. That way, I know whether they live within a mile of the project or if they live next door to it. I think it's important, and I'd like to know that, to be able to give their opinions more weight. The second question is about notification and outreach. Short of having city staff go door-to-door and tell people what is going on, I think the city should do everything they can to make sure that our residents know what's going on with our government. They need to know what our city council is doing and what is coming up so that the residents have a chance to come out and make sure that their opinion is voiced. I like Mark's idea of having an email service. And in addition, we need to continue to notice the residents by putting things on our website and through mailers.
Thank you. Darcy Paul.
Well, first off, I'm against the current proposal. I think that it was hastily decided upon, and after roughly six hours of public discussion on the evening of July 21, at around 1:00 or 1:30 in the morning, that's not the appropriate time to kind of do an about-face, think of a completely different idea, and then, and vote on it at around 2:00. So with respect to the appropriate way to get to the point where we're not actually making very substantive and important decisions well after most people are going to sleep, I think that we should do our very best to cut off these meetings for city council by about midnight and absolutely no later than 1:00. With respect to public notice, I think in this situation, it's a problem that we find ourselves in primarily because we didn't think through the way in which we're going to have a discussion process. The public notice mechanism for the current proposal was actually sort of thrown in there at the last minute, again, very, very late at night. And I think what should have happened is that since primarily people were speaking to an idea of one fenced-in area at one park for the majority of the night, we should have brought it back to committee to discuss for a little bit longer to give adequate concerns that addressed the issues of safety, noise, and sanitation. And I also support a fenced-in dog park at Stevens Creek Canyon Park and have since the very beginning of the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry Chang.
Dog park issue, as I said earlier, is very emotional, very divisive. It's not good for our community. So I spend time, I spend time visit for dog parks, 10 times in a different time period. I visit Nazgalo Creek County Park, I visit San Jose Butcher's Park, Saratoga Creek Park, and also went to Sunnyvale Las Palmas Park. I went over there in a different time slot to observe how the dog park worked. The dog park reason, what the ultimate goal, we want our dog exercise, be healthy. But to be a successful dog park, you got to have the fountain for the dog to drink. The dog fountain is different than the human fountain. It's much lower. We don't have it. We don't have it. So it would be a failure, in my opinion, the current proposal. So you got to have a fountain for the dog to drink, because when they're running around, especially in summertime, they will get dehydrated. It would be bad for their kidney. It's actually very bad for the dog. If the current proposal passed, number one. Number two, it got to be fenced. It got to be fenced. And number three, it got to be small dog, big dog, separate. Okay? And then number four, it got to provide the dog poo bag. So if they pooed, then the owner can pick it up. You ask the owner to carry the bag on themselves, forget about it. It's not going to happen. Or you look at, you look at the current situation. I also visit all proposed park, Joliman, Linda Vista, Memorial Park. My time is up. I'll continue later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a good story to tell you. Thank you.
And Orin Mahoney.
So I heard sports fields in there.
So I heard sports fields in there, too. I think that that's more of the high school district, is they're changing some of their things. I know some people are concerned about the impacts there, and I know they're going on a big project to do some outreach there more than they did in the past. You know, could we have done better on notification on this? I think we could have in some ways, but, you know, it makes it sound like, and I, believe me, I don't like being here making decisions 2:00 in the morning either, and we don't always make the best ones, but it makes it sound like we've made some decision to go ahead and do that. That was back in July, you know, we're almost through September now, and the survey is just going out. All we approved that evening, all we rushed through, was the idea that we're going to do a survey. And we are going to be doing the survey for 1,500 feet, which is a pretty good, it's multiple blocks around all of the different areas. And only after we see the results of the survey, have another public hearing where we can see the results of the survey, hear more public input, would we even think about doing a trial. So many steps. I've gone back and forth with my own views on this. I'm waiting to see what the survey says, and I'm waiting to see what other public input there is. I think what people have said is today's thing isn't working out, and I think some good things are going to come out of this. And I'm also very optimistic that we can do the fenced park up at Stevens Creek County Park.
Thank you. Our next question. The Parks and Recreation Department is inviting more people than can fit at the newly reopened Blackberry Farm. Only half of the planned parking was built. If elected, what involvement would you have in fixing the pedestrian safety and traffic and circulation problems this has caused? And let's start with Darcy Paul.
Well, that's a really good question. As probably most people know, Blackberry Farm reopened on July 4th to a wonderful reopening. And it is true that there is actually not as much parking space as there was previously. The idea being that they cut down the concept of the space from having a couple or even a few thousand people for large gatherings to more intimate types of picnic gathering spaces. So with respect to why there isn't enough parking space in the area, the idea was kind of driven around the whole smaller community concept. And I think that's a great idea. One of the things that we can be doing to help alleviate traffic and parking problems is from the outset of the application process, when people try to have picnics at Blackberry Farm, try to encourage them as much as possible to carpool. And I've actually had some direct experience with this, having held an event at Blackberry Farm on August 9th for the campaign kickoff. But with respect to being able to diminish the traffic even more, there's actually overflow parking at Monta Vista High School. And I think we should be making good use of the idea that people can get used to parking over at Monta Vista and have some kind of city shuttle take them from that parking lot over to the lower Blackberry Farm area. So those are the two ideas I would have for alleviating the traffic and parking problems.
Thank you. Daniel Nguyen.
So I think the solution about having residents park in Monta Vista is inadequate. First of all, a lot of residents don't want to have to walk all the way from there. Second, I think a shuttle service would be too expensive for the city and not cost-efficient. What I propose is to direct staff to look into ways to renovate, again, Blackberry Farm and make sure that there's adequate parking this time. I've talked to residents from the Monta Vista area. They're entirely upset that residents are parking in front of their houses, and it's just unacceptable for a small town to not have adequate parking. I went to UCLA, I lived in Los Angeles. It's a pain when you can't find a place to park. I came back home because that's one thing I didn't like. Cupertino, again, is a small town. Parking is vital to making sure that we stay that way.
Oren Mahoney.
Yeah, fortunately, this one is one that's very easily solved. When Blackberry Farm was redone, it was scaled down. It used to have a picnic area for 3,000 people, and now it has a picnic area for 400 people. The parking was scaled down to do that as well. And in fact, the creek, if you go over there, goes through where the old parking lot is. I don't want to put any more parking in there. 98.9% of the people think that what was done at Blackberry Farm, it was an amazingly good job. There are a few residents that have been impacted by some overflow parking on certain events. We've already looked into that. Many of those events were from organizations outside the city in keeping with the idea of making it more city-oriented. The park and rec staff is looking this year, now that they've got a year under their belt, is looking at next year what to do. If you scale down the maximum size to 300, it'll all fit in the parking spaces that are there. So one of the things that I've talked to people about is just pick, you know, one or two events a year for city people only, where you go above the 300, and that's where you might do the shuttle or whatever. But I think this is an issue that's going to be very easily solved, unlike some of the other ones we talked about earlier, so.
Thank you. Marty Miller.
The first question I have is, how did we wind up with a solution that had so little parking in the first place? Parking has always been an issue. It's a major issue in Cupertino, and it's a continuing issue. We continually seem to underpark our new developments, and this apparently, unfortunately, is the case as well. I believe that when this was approved, the concept was event parking, so that when there were the large groups, the group that was holding the whatever, picnic or whatever, was responsible for making sure the parking took place in a respectful way to our residents. If that's not working, then the solutions are, as Oren suggested, scaling down the amount of people we can let in, or reducing the reserved picnic areas further. I mean, that's a self-limiting solution right there, because as you cut down the amount of picnic area, you can't have as many people attending these events, and the parking needs will also drop as well. Thank you.
Barry Chang.
The parking situation, we can have a park in the Monta Vista High School and then have pay shuttle service. Then that won't impose financial burden on the city. The road walking down to, if you walk from Burn down to the Blackberry Farm, that street is not very safe. It's kind of narrow, and it's hard to walk. I walked several times. So you ask people to walk, people won't feel safe. Unless we can come up with some solution, ask the public work department to look into it, otherwise, the best solution, in my opinion, because if they have an event, pay a small, minimal fee for the shuttle service would be good. Because I remember when I went to the Christmas party, my friends, they generally asked us to wait at the school, and then they have a shuttle bus to take the guests to their house, instead of imposing the lot of car around their neighborhood, that become a bad neighbor. So that's a good solution. So, come back to the dog park. I also visit Stevens Creek Park, and then I find out there's a lot of area there you can put a fenced park, very walkable, up on the Villa Maria that area, or down below nearby the restroom area. The water is surprised there. You can put a water fountain for the dog. I also look at all four parks today. Joliman Park and Memorial Park are heavily used. Thank you. My time is up. I'll continue later.
Thank you. Continuing saga. Mark Santoro.
Blackberry Farm is a prime example of lack of transparency in government, not only from the city's residents' point of view, but from the council's point of view. I was a new council member when this came on. It passed by a 4-1 vote. I was the one, no vote. I didn't vote for it, not because I didn't think it was a good project, but because I don't vote for things I don't understand. I repeatedly requested both on TV and privately information on the park, which I wasn't given. I was arm-twisted by fellow council members on the dais saying, "This has been going on for six years. We know what we're doing. We got it taken care of. Just vote for it." $2 million was hidden from the public during a budget cycle, and later, when I asked the staff member why they hid the $2 million, he said, "Well, if I made it clear to you that we needed $2 million more, then you guys might have decided to spend it for something else, and I wanted to decide where it gets spent." It was ridiculous. I went out, I walked the park, I looked at where the creek was being moved. I thought it was being moved inappropriately. I made some suggestions, one of which saved 12 large trees, the other one of which would have doubled the size of the parking lot. But no, they cut 50 yards out of the parking lot by moving that one section of creek that I personally don't think needed to be done. The way to fix problems like this is not to let them happen in the first place. If everybody knows what's going on, we can be diligent, and we can prevent these kind of mistakes. Transparency in government is paramount. I think it's very important that we pay attention to what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mahesh Neelani.
I think Blackberry Farm is a very good example of what the city has been able to achieve in an open space area for our residents and as a revenue earner for the city. The scaling down of the reservation areas from 3,000 guests to 400 guests is also commendable. And I also believe that if parking is going to be an issue, we can further reduce this number to 300 to be able to accommodate, you know, valid parking there. The parking availability at Monta Vista is sufficient over the weekends, and if this can be advertised in our application forms that are given to people to make the reservations, with also an idea or indication of that there is a shuttle service available from the Parks and Rec Department at a very minimal cost, which will cover the costs of operating this for the people, and people would be happy to do it. Because it's very difficult to get a place for 400 people for a picnic outside in the open areas, and we have that facility out here. And regarding safety of pedestrians out there, I think the Parks and Rec staff that we have can be trained on this particular aspect, and these youngsters can be deployed on these days of events, right up to the road from where it will go down to the Blackberry Farm, and I think that should work effectively.
Thank you. We now have a question about the Mary Avenue Bridge. Have any of you observed the traffic on Mary Avenue Bridge? That is, have you looked into the number of people using the bridge? Do you justify the investment of precious dollars in projects such as these? Let me read it again. Have any of you observed the traffic on Mary Avenue Bridge? That is, have you looked into the number of people using the bridge? Do you justify the investment of precious dollars in projects such as these? And we'll start with Oren Mahoney.
So yeah, every time I drive under it, I look to see whether somebody's crossing it, and most times they are. And if you figure you can cross it in a minute, add it all up, it adds up to a fair amount of people. I was skeptical about that project to begin with. You know, one of the things that I think most people here know is that we just paid a portion of it, that a lot of it came from VTA money. A lot of it came from VTA money that was dedicated to that usage. Unfortunately, a lot of our budget process works that way, where funds, as you know, get targeted to certain things. So if it wasn't going to be for our bicycle pedestrian bridge, it was going to be for somebody else's bicycle pedestrian bridge. It wasn't like it could be fed back into the general fund to do something else. You know, I think it's, I think we just wanted an award for it. At the state, we were the only city to win one of these Putnam Awards in Northern California. We are going to, you know, keep track of that and see how many people use it. And it was expensive, but I think it turned out okay. Blackberry Farm, to me, is a much more, I feel much better about the money we spent there, and I'll just say that. But I think both were okay, and I voted for both.
Barry Chang.
I disagree with Oren's say. That was the money wasted. I was there last night. I walked back and forth. I was the only person who walked back and forth, no one else. I mean, come on, Oren, you don't, don't, don't...
I must have been driving under, wasn't I?
You drove under, you saw a lot of people, maybe that was a phantom, okay. I mean, serious, I was there, I drove by every time, I don't see that many people. For that kind of money spent, for this kind of return, I mean, we can spend that money much better. I mean, as one of the resident, Kathy told me that if we rent air monitor equipment only $500 a month, we can get a couple of air monitor equipment around the city and find out what kind of air we have, you know? Because in our backyard, in our car, you've got that dust. Don't you want to know what's in there? I do. I do want to know what's in there. But then unless you monitor, you collect it, I mean, you don't have to do any, you cannot do anything, okay? I'm a train engineer, I got to find some fact, and then that's one, we should spend the money on it. And of course, it's a big name, it's a bridge, and also, you look at it, you know, in the nighttime, no one uses it, but the power, electricity, cities keep wasting it. I mean, the maintenance fee is cost there. So that's the part, we have to really be careful on what we spend and spend on what is best for our citizens, okay? The health issue, the safety issue, I mean, this cement plant is polluting the air here. I mean, we don't do anything, and we'd rather spend money on there. And in my opinion, it's wrong, and it shouldn't be that way. Okay, come back to the dog park. No, I don't.
Marty Miller. Please, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I alluded to this issue earlier. I think that we should be doing cost-benefit analysis on everything we do, and this is one that I'm really scratching my head on, particularly since, if you look at the city's finances, we basically funded this with borrowed money. Now, at the same time, when I walk around the city, I see roads that are deteriorating, and I see sidewalks that are breaking, I see street trees that aren't being properly taken care of. There's a lot of deferred maintenance going on in the city. And then there's another issue that residents have informed me about, a lot of residents, and that is speeding in the neighborhoods. And it turns out that the city is now charging a $2,000 fee roughly for a petition if you want to have a speed bump in town or on your street to address safety issues. I think that those are the kinds of things we should be putting our money into, our important neighborhood infrastructure, before we spend it on bridges over the highway and other types of things that aren't nearly as important. We need to reprioritize what we do and how we do it, and particularly in this time when money is so tight and everybody is having trouble making their budgets match, meet. Thanks.
Mahesh Neelani.
My thoughts on this are also that this is where a strong fiscal leadership is required in the city to be able to look at these projects and how they affect our community and our people. Are these necessary for us, or they're not necessary for us? If it's just an icon that we are going to build for very few people to use, and it doesn't make sense, it's different. But if it's a combination of money that comes from several cities and certain organizations like VTA and everything, and it's cost-effective, it's a different thing, as long as it serves the people's needs and purposes. Having said that, I feel that now it's already up. You cannot dismantle and do away with that. So let's be proud of it while it's there. Enjoy it when we drive under it with the lights that burn in the evening and do that, and move on ahead with better things to look at.
Darcy Paul.
Well, I think that hindsight is 20/20, and a lot of the times, you know, we look at a particular project and go, "Oh, well, this was not successful, and therefore, we shouldn't have constructed it," when we're thinking about making it seven or eight years ago, or four years ago, as the case may be. We have to take a look at also the particular conditions that projects were approved. So with respect to this particular project, I think Oren raises a good point. There was a certain amount of money that was earmarked for bridges and construction in the state, and had we not used it, then it would have gone to another city. So it is a cost-benefit analysis that really has to be done within the context of the particular time you're making the decision. You know, that being said, I also agree that we can't tear it down now, and I personally like it. It's a nice mechanism to have, to walk over to Sunnyvale, and perhaps we can make efforts to increase its utility. As for wasting the cost of lights, let's put in energy-efficient lighting in there, and at the same time, try to encourage the development of companies that will develop this kind of energy efficiency within the city of Cupertino. So I think we need to be forward-looking about it and make decisions that are in keeping with our current conditions.
Thank you. Daniel Nguyen.
I think our infamous Bridge to Nowhere is a prime example of irresponsible government. Yes, there were grants that were given to us from the state, but regardless of those, we still spent millions of dollars to build this bridge. Millions of dollars that could have been spent on city services, such as adding another police car to patrol our streets, making sure that our library stays open so that our students have a safe place to study, making sure that our roads are fixed, as Marty was saying earlier. We need a government that makes sure that we pinch our pennies, and makes sure that every single dollar that we spend actually benefits residents of our cities. That is what responsible government is, and that's what I stand for. Thank you.
Mark Santoro.
The Mary Avenue Bridge is a beautiful...
The Mary Avenue Bridge is a beautiful bridge. It's far nicer looking than the original plans, it costs less money, it's, it's, it's a thing to be, beauty. It's also a thing that council members like to put their names on plaques and do grand openings and have big parties so they can point back and said, see, I did that. I made a motion on the council that we eliminate plaques with council members' names on them so that we give equal weight to small projects, like fixing the roads in front of people's houses, fixing the school traffic problem. I didn't even get a second on that motion, by the way. People like to go back and point to things they do, and I think that's important. I had huge fights for money to fix the roads. I, I was fighting like crazy for money for what I call the Walk-Bike-Car-Pull-to-School program to help leave traffic problems around the schools. I couldn't hardly get any money for that at all, and yet, you know, we look at what this bridge cost. I also had a huge fight last time around if people were paying any attention to, for money for fenced-in dog parks, which I was finally able to get the council to agree to allocate some money for that. So there's a lot of other things we can spend money for. I, I think the bridge is beautiful, it's there now, but I am concerned that, that elected officials like to get their names on plaques. Thank you.
The next question is addressed to one candidate. And when we have a question like this, that candidate gets to answer first. And if the other candidates want to answer, they are invited to do that. So after the first answer, I will then call on people and you can say, yeah, I have something to say, or no, just pass. So the question is addressed to Mahesh Neelani. How would you bring back jobs to Cupertino? Your slogan is Jobs in Cupertino. What measures are you planning to get jobs back here? And we'll start with you.
My theme for this election is keep jobs in Cupertino. And the best way to be able to do that is to support the opportunity, the innovation and growth of our major employers. And also introduce a, a strong partnership and a consistent partnership between the city and our small scale, a small, small business community out here. This will also include the revitalization of the existing businesses that we have out here in retail. And if we allow and we support the innovation and growth of our major employers, like for example, Apple with its second campus, it'll bring in a lot of jobs. People who come to work out here in these campuses, new campuses, will be able to shop here, eat here, their lunches and everything, whatever, some of them will even live out here. This will, this will give a lot of business and opportunity for our small businesses here to flourish. With that flourishing, the small businesses can also offer, in these tough economic times, you know, opportunities for people to be able to buy at discounted prices. And we have, you know, organizations like the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Committee in place out here. Working together with all these businesses, the big, the small, the city and the chamber, would help generate those kind of employments.
Orin Mahoney, do you wish to address this?
Yeah, I, you know, I guess I just echo what, what Mahesh says. We, I think most people here understand the direct and indirect impact of, in particular, our two largest employers here, Apple and HP. They're in our top sales tax generators, and the indirect impact on our hotels, restaurants, and all the other businesses here are very high. And having said that, they also historically have had a low impact on the city. Their campuses are very self-contained, the traffic kind of flows at different times of the day, so they don't throw significant traffic on the streets at the same time. And yet, having said that, we sometimes have, even though everybody says, they know how important it is, sometimes we've sent mixed messages to them when they've come in for certain things. So I think it's important to send the right message to them. It doesn't mean we roll over and do anything they ask for, but I think we need to treat them with the, the respect that, that they deserve based on their impact on the city and their role as, as basically good corporate citizens.
Mark Santoro.
Sure. I, I think this really comes to the short and long-term goals. For the short-term goals, I agree, we have a couple of great companies here. I'm, I used to work for Apple Computer, I'm kind of biased, I've owned just about every product they've ever made. I've got, my house is full of their stuff. And I think it's great to have them here in Cupertino, as well as HP and the other large employers. And I think we should, we should keep them here, as I was quoted saying in the paper a few months back. I also think we can do some things to help other people. I'm going to steal something from Marty Miller, because he told me this the other day. One idea he had was actually to give tax credits to people to get them, for example, to move into Valco. We do that for some of our bigger employers, why not do it for some people for a few years we're trying to attract? Sorry, Marty. I also think that the council can get involved on a short-term basis. For example, when Sandhill came in and was looking to build a project, I went off and talked to them and I said, why don't you do this? Instead of getting stuck down and with staff for two years and nobody knows what you're doing, how about you go out and talk to the public and build a downtown area? What the public wants is a downtown area. When they finally came in front of the council, the public was overwhelmingly in favor of their project because they actually listened to what the people wanted. From a long-term point of view, I think it's important we look at things like roads, our excellent schools. What's really important to attracting business here in the long term is to just this to be a better place to live. If everybody wants to live here and everybody wants to work here, then businesses will come.
Darcy Paul.
Well, I think the most critical part of making sure that we have jobs in Cupertino is that we're taking proactive measures to identify sectors of the economy and industry that we want to attract into Cupertino. And I, I very, very, very deeply feel that the, the green economy is something that is not just taking off right now, it's, it's going to become a way of life in the future. And with respect to us being able to take jobs and create a space for them in the city, there are a lot of empty office spaces around the city right now. And if we can fill them up and create a customer base for our existing retail, restaurants, commercial and, and services establishments, then we are a long way towards fixing our, our economic problems at the moment. So in, in terms of making sure that people actually want to come into the city to, to work, I, I think that we don't have as much of a problem having people here to live, primarily because you can just look at our real estate values and, and know that people in fact do want to, do want to live here. But in terms of working here, I think as a city, what we can be doing is having more of a collaborative spirit with the entrepreneurs that come here. One idea is to have Wi-Fi within the city. A lot of the entrepreneurs I talk to say, well, this is Cupertino, why don't we have Wi-Fi? And, and that's one of the types of initiatives I take.
Thank you. Barry Chang.
First, I want to clarify, okay? I don't mean to dismantle the Mary Bridge, okay? Make it clear, I'm regular, because of the negative campaign against me, they say I'm for the high cement plant. So you heard what I say, if people can still spreading the rumors, I'm for the high cement plant, they are lying. The negative campaign is out there. They also say I received a big check from the developer. We haven't even filed our report to FPPC how much check we receive yet. And then someone already know I receive a big check. Be honest with you, I don't receive any check from any developer. And I don't intend to receive any donation from the developer or the high cement plant. So make it clear. So I don't mean to dismantle the bridge. The bridge was a mistake, in my opinion, but what can you do? It's, it's there, that we just have to suffer from now on. Because the maintenance fee, besides the, the lighting, the maintenance fee will be there. Come back to the question about how do we develop, to developing more business to come to the city? I agree with Marty, I agree with Mark, now we should offer the credit incentive, tax credit incentive, which we offer to our big company here anyway. Why not offer to everybody, be fair, okay? And then, and I know one of the candidate on the ballot statement say I'm for Apple. Come on, we are not running for Apple board, we are running for city council of Cupertino. What the best for the city, we have to do it, what the best for the city? For example, if Apple come back say I want 100% tax return, tax credit back, are we, are you going to be for it? I'm not going to be, because then we get nothing. Like the cement plant, we get nothing at all.
Thank you. Marty Miller.
First, let me say that I agree, Apple and HP are very important to the city, and we want to support them and we want to work with them to make sure that they're successful. And certainly, Apple's second campus is very important, we want to make sure that's successful as well. At the same time, we also want to make sure that we're addressing the impacts of whatever development is going on in the city. And in, in terms of more jobs, jobs are important, they are. And to the extent that we're filling existing spaces, existing empty office spaces, there's no issue. But every time we start to build more office space, we run into something called the jobs-housing ratio. And the state comes down on us and says, the more you get out of line with too many jobs in the city and not enough houses, then we expect you to go in and build more houses. And that invariably, the state wants to see condos, high-density condos. So we need to look at these things very carefully and make sure that we're doing them in a balanced way. The second point is, I think more important than jobs is sales tax dollars that the city can use to support the services that we need here. And so even as we look for other employers to come to town, it's important that we look at them from the standpoint of are they going to locate their sales offices here? And I would propose that we do a collaboration with property owners to work with them and offer incentives to bring the right kind of, of companies into Cupertino.
Thank you. I'd like to get two more questions in.
Mark, you speak if you don't want.
I, go ahead, sorry about that.
No worries. On the campaign trail, excuse me, on the campaign trail, I have not heard a single resident worry about losing jobs in Cupertino. We have two, we have many great businesses in the city. Our biggest two employers are doing very well. And I'm proud as a Cupertino resident that Apple is looking to expand, you know, that shows that the business is doing well, and it shows that we're actually gaining jobs and not losing them. I think the real issue here is our retail sector. What we want to do is, you know, my fellow candidates here are saying that we need to develop a strong consumer base. And they hope to do that by having employees shop at our local businesses. I think the better way is to have us, our residents, shop at local businesses. Everyone always talks about having a stronger community. Why not have a stronger community by supporting our local businesses ourselves? Once we do that, Cupertino can become a destination city for retail. Instead of us having to go to other cities where the city loses those sales tax, residents from other cities will come to us. That way, we generate not just our own sales tax dollars, but tax dollars from other residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to get in two more questions. And in order to do that, we have to cut the time for the answers. Would the candidates be willing to cut your answers to one minute for the last two questions?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, all right, timekeeper. What plans, if any, do you have to expand the efforts of government to provide, provide clean and renewable energy? And we're going to start with Barry Chang.
Our city is behind our school. Our school is actually ahead of us. I saw the high school already put the solar panel on the parking lot, that's a very good idea. Also, the end of college is doing it. We can cooperate more with our school, gain some experience. I talked to one of the school board member, and he say he's willing to share with, you know, Tu and Dong, which is a very good idea. We, we got to do something on the green energy, because the environment is everybody's responsibility. We don't do anything, we may not have the, the next generation or future generation may not have something to enjoy it. So the green energy, the clean energy, that's why I emphasize on the, on the cement plant. They pollute the air, we are suffering, we are inhaled, we got to do something about it. I have, still have 15 seconds, so go back to the dog park, okay? I did visit all the dog park, and then I find out the, the, the Vista Park is very hard to use because there's two kids playground area, so it's not actually good for the, for the kids.
Okay, now it's time to stop.
Thank you.
Mahesh Neelani.
I am absolutely for, you know, a green Cupertino and, you know, use of renewable energy systems. In fact, I have been responsible to get first Indo-American solar company start operations in Cupertino. I also happened to initiate their meeting with the city environmental manager, the new one, to be able to see how we can help as far as solar, and solar is concerned for the city and citizens of Cupertino. With Kirsch Center also, we've, you know, in dialogue with them to be able to help them set up a little training center for solar. And this company is offering solar installation of panels in residents' homes at cost at the moment initially. So we're working hard on that, and I'm for this.
Thank you. Marty Miller.
On the Planning Commission, I have recommended and tried to push for a more comprehensive program to disseminate solar systems throughout the city. My focus was first and foremost on getting the city itself to put some solar cells on some of the rooftops here. And I worked with them for many months, and, and I'm still not to the point where they've agreed to go ahead and do it. Perhaps, you know, if we hadn't spent that money on the Mary Avenue Bridge, we could have, could have put it into some solar systems in town. But the city, with respect to solar, is looking very carefully at, at their budgets. This is an opportunity for solar because there, there are so many incentives to put it in, there's the, the federal government incentives and the state incentives, that we really can, at this time, if we push hard, get this into businesses in a cost-effective way, as well as onto city buildings. And I'm all for it.
Mark Santoro.
So I think there's a lot we can do. And by the way, what you can do starts at home. At my home, we have a couple of compost bins, we also have solar heat. So I think everyone can start at their own home doing something. You can plant native plants. All of us together can make a lot of a difference. With regards to the city, the city's done several things, including putting higher-efficiency lights in. We lowered the fees, I actually voted also to lower the fees to $200 for a solar permit on, on people's homes. So they're heavily subsidized to encourage people to do that. We were looking at hiring a green coordinator last year. While at the time, I thought maybe we could wait a year, I was against sharing the green coordinator with, with Sunnyvale and said, why don't we hire the green coordinator full-time? And Gilbert Wong made a motion for a full-time green coordinator, which I seconded, I believe, and that's what we've gone ahead and done. So we have a full-time person looking at, to help us in the future about what to do with green. And we just actually agreed to sign some suggestive legislation in a couple council meetings back. Thank you.
Daniel Nguyen.
First, I think we need to have buildings that are LEED certified. And not only should we ask buildings and developments inside of the city to do that, but we should lead by example and make sure that city buildings are LEED certified as well. In addition, the school districts are adding solar panels to their campuses, and I don't see why we can't do the same thing. Now Cupertino and Silicon Valley in general is the land of innovators. I was just speaking to one audience member, who I might add graduated from our local public schools. He has an idea and a business to develop renewable energies. We need to work with our event, environmental coordinator that Mark was just talking about, and make sure that we find these people. And not only to use their products, but to make sure that they set up shop in Cupertino. Thank you.
Orin Mahoney.
Yeah, you've heard some of the things the city's already doing. The environmental, the environmental development person, excuse me, environmental coordinator has already paid for herself in getting some grants that we're using now to do an audit, basically, of all the city buildings. And based on the results of that audit, then we'll go ahead and figure out, you know, what savings we can do, whether solar is the right thing, or whether there's something else that we can invest in that'll give us a bigger return. But as you heard, the bigger, the bigger returns, I mean, there's not a lot of city buildings compared to, you know, all the companies that we talked about earlier. So we need to continue to work with the companies, almost all the companies, all the buildings that we've approved in the last, probably since I've been on the council, have been at least LEED silver. Some have gone beyond that. And now, the next thing is to take it, and there's not a lot of new homes, but to the existing homes. And we've got this Actera program that the city is supporting, where they'll go out and do a free energy audit in your own house. And if you complete the energy audit, you'll get a free tree.
Darcy Paul.
Well, one of the things that we can keep on doing is, is to make sure that our fleet is energy efficient and that we're using as much as possible hybrid and electric vehicles. We've been transitioning to that type of fleet for the last several years, and I would encourage the continuation of that, that type of transition. You know, with respect to solar and alternative sources of energy, I would think, you know, since now we have the Mary Avenue footbridge, maybe we can just stick solar panels and little windmills on it. But, but, but in seriousness, I think we can be thinking of specific measures to bring in, the dog park example, there are actually solar pumps out there that kind of operate on their own energy. So I would want those types of specific measures in our, in our future. And finally, we really need to focus upon bringing sustainable and pro-green businesses into the community. And I would talk to a lot of the companies to make sure that we can have a consortium in the city of such companies. Thanks.
Thank you. Here's our last question. What is your greatest accomplishment and how has it prepared you to serve on the council? And we'll start with Marty Miller.
It's not fair, I don't get any time to think about it. I, I think.
I think, I think my, the project that I've spent the most amount of time on in the city as a planning commissioner has been in trying to get the city to look at development, further development, in a proactive manner, and plan ahead so that we don't get this headbutting when we come here and a developer comes in and presents a project that people don't like. The earlier we get started and we get community input, the better it is. And I did this in the, what's called the North Valco area, in the, in the space where Apple and HP is. I started it before Apple announced that they were actually going to buy property there. And we came up with a rough outline of a master plan for that area, which I think, if we pursue that further, as Apple comes in and brings their plans in, I think we'll have a development that we're all proud of. And it will make the process of getting Apple approved go that much faster and that much speedier because we have fleshed out the issues in the community ahead of time. Thank you.
Mahesh Neelani.
Can we just repeat this question again, please?
Yes. What is your greatest accomplishment, and how has it prepared you to serve on the council?
I am sure that my greatest accomplishment in the nine years that I have been here has been to bring this community together. I, my record of public and community service is unmatched. I started the Diwali Festival in Cupertino seven years ago. Today, this is the seventh year. You're all invited. It's September 26th at the Memorial Park. And for the past seven years, this thing, this festival has brought all the communities together to celebrate diversity and culture. And I feel that if you can get the communities together in this wonderful city, you know, it'll make this city still more beautiful to live in and, you know, live harmoniously together.
And Barry Chang.
I have too many accomplishments when I was on school board. If I want to talk, it's more than one minute. So, go to my website, www.berry4cupidino.com. Go look at it. There's a lot of accomplishments there in the past. The most recent accomplishment, I'm very proud of it, I visit, as I say, I visit 10 times to the dog park, four different parks. I mean, no candidate had done it. This is an issue that's important to this community. I mean, candidate got to spend time to study it. I studied ahead of time and get the firsthand information. Also, I went to Stevens Creek Park. I was also very proud of, spoke up against the cement plant. Two years ago, I spoke against the cement plant at the public hearing. Four days ago, I was the only one candidate. If I don't care about the issue, I won't spend time. And this is, this is a very important issue, a health issue for everybody. The cement money we save on the cement is outnumbered by the cost we spend on the medical expenses, according to Santa Clara Medical Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Santoro.
You ready? Okay. I have a PhD from Stanford in electrical engineering. It helps me with analytical thinking. I was the CEO of a very successful company. It helps me run businesses and things. These are not my greatest accomplishments. My greatest accomplishment, I think, are my family and my friends. I always try to leave people as I go through life just a little bit better than when I found them. And that's my goal on the city council, to leave Cupertino just a little bit better than I found it. When I was trying to decide whether to run again, I asked several people, whether you like me or not, do you think Cupertino is noticeably better since I've been on the council? One citizens group told me that, yes, we think so. And the reason is, we actually made some suggestions to the council and the staff that were actually taken during the housing element. Said, two years ago, we wouldn't have made those suggestions. We would have just gotten up there and complained. So, they actually feel they're being listened to. And I think that helps a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Darcy Paul.
Oh, I don't know about greatest accomplishment, but, you know, what I think I bring to the table in terms of approach and personality is the idea that no matter what our discussion, we should always try to seek a collaborative solution, as well as try to keep the heat of the discussion, so to speak, at a level that energizes us, but doesn't, doesn't divide us. So, I would point out, you know, various types of situations in which the flavor of the discussion could have turned into something that's, that's very divisive. With respect to the dog park issue, for instance, I think that what we really need to do is think about our attitude and approach, and make sure that we're coming up with solutions that cater to the underlying concerns of the community, and make sure that we're listening to each of the various factors that make up our community. So, that, I think, is probably the best approach that I can give to the city.
Thank you. Daniel Nguyen.
My greatest accomplishment of my short life so far is graduating from Onavista High School. People come to Cupertino for the schools. Our property values are worth so much because of our schools. I would not be sitting here today if it weren't for the education I received at my alma mater. You know, I'm the only candidate sitting up here who grew up in Cupertino, who's a true native of our city. And no matter how long you live in the city, it doesn't matter what experiences you have, you can't learn to become a native of our city. Our city needs someone with that type of perspective, someone who doesn't answer to outside interests, special interests, and represents every single resident equally, regardless of their age, their gender, or their ethnicity. That's why I'm sitting up here today. That's why graduating from Onavista is my greatest accomplishment. And that's why I want to be your next city council member.
Thank you. And now we come to closing statements.
I didn't say my greatest accomplishment.
I'm sorry.
I don't get to do this one.
I'm sorry, Orin. It's getting late.
You have no accomplishment, Orin?
I'll do it real quick. My greatest accomplishment is the plaque on the Mary Avenue Bridge. No, no. Just kidding. You know, I think for me, it's about leadership, and it's not about leadership with my own ideas. I came to the council without a lot, without a passion for doing this and that. I've tried to work hard to bring everybody together, both on the council and people in the community. I've learned, I've learned when I, and I've admitted that I've learned from mistakes, projects that got overturned. We have better projects now. And I'll continue to learn, even though the experience is good. So, my greatest accomplishment is, is working toward making Cupertino a better place to live.
Thank you very much. Now we come to closing statements. We will go in the reverse order of the opening statements. So, we will start with Mark Santoro.
Thank you. I'd like to sort of leave everybody with this message. Freedom costs. I'm really happy to see this many people here. A couple of years ago, I kind of chewed out the audience for being so small. And I'm really glad to see a bigger audience now. We don't have to go risk being shot or killed for our freedom, but we have to be diligent, or we'll give it away. Somebody asked me what would be my best strategy for getting re-elected. My best strategy would be to get everybody in the city to watch one council meeting. I think you learn a lot about your elected officials, so I highly recommend that. And a quick word about negative campaigns. Be diligent and pay attention. I've seen flyers that said, I was running for election because I want to get a permit to build the house that, by the way, I'm already living in. I've seen things that say my mother-in-law's been influencing my decision. Sherry's mother's been dead since 2002. My better half, for those of you who don't know, happens to be sitting back here. She's Chinese. I was accused of being prejudiced against Chinese people. So, pay attention to the stuff that comes. People don't put their name on it, you know, pay attention. All the people up here put our names on. And by the way, I want to thank these great, I guess, all gentlemen this time, up here for running for city council. It's a really hard job. It takes a lot of time and dedication, and I'm very honored to see that this many people are foolish enough to try to run for this position. I want to thank each and every one of you.
Thank you. Darcy Paul.
Well, again, I think it's all in the details here. With respect to making sure that we have the best possible city, you know, we really need to approach all of the issues that come in front of us with a spirit of collaboration and openness, and to be able to select the people that we believe will bring to the table the best ideas for the city. You know, I think I happen to have some of the really good ones. I think it's up to you to decide, you know, from what you've heard and what you, what you learn, who actually has the most optimal ideas and thinking process for bringing effective types of jobs to the economy, resolutions to our difficult issues, and being able to look to the future and say, okay, we're at this point right now, and we want to improve. We want to take all of our strengths, and instead of, you know, making our differences into something that ends up kind of dividing us and, and making us conflict, instead, do the work of trying to figure out, how do we put these pieces together? So, with respect to the economy, I really feel that the best thing that we can do, not just for the city, but for, for everyone, is to look at the particular types of industries that are very socially, politically, and economically feasible at this moment. So, what I'd like to see in the future is a thriving retail environment in Cupertino. The Cupertino Square area is the heart of our city. And with respect to the important details of how we go about revitalizing that area, keep in mind that it's actually owned by three entities, J.C. Penney's, Sears, as well as, as the bank right now. So, you know, starting out from those types of positions, I think we can really think about how we proceed from there to revitalize particular areas of our economy and, and industries. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Nguyen.
The reason why I'm running for Cupertino City Council is because I know that it's a great place to live, and I know personally that it's a great place to grow up in. I know that I am young. I promise you that even though I don't have any white hairs right now, if I'm elected, within a year, I will have all the white hairs you want me to, you want to see on my head. You know, I respect all the candidates sitting up here with me. But again, I'm the only native who is running for our city council. That type of perspective and mindset is something that you just cannot earn. You cannot gain, and you can't learn. One issue I have with the way city council works right now is that it goes too late into the night. That deprives our residents, such as you, the ability to come out and speak your mind on a subject. I don't think that limiting meetings to midnight is going to work, because what you'll have is you'll have residents waiting until midnight, being told to go home at the end of the night. What we need is, we need representatives, council members, who sit up here and make decisions that are best for the city as a whole, who represent every single resident equally, regardless of who they are, who they know, and regardless of their age, their gender, and their ethnicity. What we need is, we need responsible government for us, our residents. And I think that I bring the new, the new leadership that is required to bring that. Thank you.
Mahesh Neelani.
Like I mentioned before, that together, you know, we have built this successful community that we call home, Cupertino. What a wonderful city, a place where we all enjoy to live, work, and raise a family. But we are going through this challenging economic times, and we all together must work hard to maintain our quality of life. To be able to, you know, expect and deserve the vital services that the city provides us, has been providing to us, I have decided to run and put my experience and skills for the city council. So, my main intention, like I said, is to keep jobs in Cupertino, with supporting opportunity, innovation, and growth of major employers, starting a consistent relationship and partnership with the small business community, which is very vital to our city's this thing, and also managing the city's resources with sound fiscal leadership, which will ensure the balanced budget. And you have all heard earlier from me about my accomplishments in the nine years that I've been here, organizations that I've been involved with. My website, www.mahesforcouncil.com, will show you a lot of responsible leaders who have endorsed me for this campaign. I am experienced, and I'm ready to serve you now. I believe in honesty and integrity in public service, and will serve you with principle. But for that, I need your support for this upcoming elections. So, please visit my website, and please, it'll give you information, and also how to get involved. Thank you.
Marty Miller.
Our city faces a number of challenges in the years ahead. To reiterate, two-thirds of our sales tax revenue comes from just three sources, which the current budget identifies as a very high revenue risk. One-third of all the retail space in Cupertino is located in Cupertino Square, and that mall is woefully underperforming by millions of dollars a year. That has to be a primary focus for us. Cupertino Square's success means important commercial services for our residents, and needed sales tax dollars to fund municipal services. And it's not just Cupertino Square that's hurting. When I walk around town and talk to businesses, the business climate is hurting all of our small businesses. Some are going out of business, and many are just hanging on. When Apple consolidates into its second campus, it will vacate a large number of smaller office spaces in town. As a result, the city's commercial vacancy rate could skyrocket. Now is the time to begin working with our property owners to plan for this eventuality and facilitate a smooth transition. Deferred maintenance of our neighborhoods and lack of attention to traffic issues is a major concern for many of the residents that I've talked to. And we must raise that issue to a higher priority. Advanced planning for future growth and close coordination with school districts must take place if we are to protect our schools from overdevelopment. Finally, the current fiscal situation requires action. We can continue to hemorrhage and tighten our belts. We can raise taxes, or we can get to work improving our retail sector by collaborating with property owners and offering incentives to desirable businesses to locate in Cupertino. Please vote for me, Marty Miller, and I will focus on what needs to be done. Thank you.
Orin Mahoney.
Yeah. So, before I came in here tonight, I thought the city was in pretty good shape. But after listening to my fellow candidates, I'm not, I'm not so sure about that. No, actually, we are, we are in very good shape. And as I've walked around Cupertino over the last few weeks, that's been really reinforced. You know, the survey that I, that I talked about earlier has been reinforced by talking to people. And the satisfaction with the city services is really a reflection of our great city staff and the strong financial position we maintain. Make no mistake, this city is an incredibly strong financial position. If we spent more money the last few years than we've taken in, it's because we paid cash for Blackberry Farm and the Mary Avenue Bridge. And that was done based on reserves we had built up. And now they're down, and we'll be building them up again. You know, I've go to the, the reason I wasn't at the Lehigh Cement thing is there was a League of California Cities Conference. I mean, people would kill for the financial position that we're in, the reserves that we have in cities right next door to us. They would love to have that. We're in a strong position. Doesn't mean we should be complacent. We need to continue to work on that. But guess what? The council doesn't pave any streets, or answer 911 calls, or deliver recreational classes, or pay the sales tax. That's so important to maintaining our financial position. It's the council's job to provide an environment where we attract and retain that great staff, as well as attracting and retaining the right businesses that will continue to contribute to our city in the future. I think that I have demonstrated the leadership to accomplish those objectives and help create an even better Cupertino over the next four years. That's why current Vice Mayor Chris Wang, Councilmember Dolly Sandoval, Sheriff Laurie Smith, state and local leaders, educators, and the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce are all offering me their broad-based support. I hope I can count on your support as well on November 3rd. Thanks.
Barry Chang.
I'm not going to the dog park this time. Okay? Sorry. Maybe later. This city does have a public trust problem. On the dog park issue, I'm able to correct council member Mark Santoro saying that the citizen committee group proposed, actually, the city council totally disregarded what citizen group proposed. So, that's why it creates so much problem. We also had this problem before, when they pushed for their building more condos, and that's why the citizen group arm up against it with the referendum to defeat it. That's not healthy for this, for this city. I mean, be honest. We have much more important issue to face, public safety, public health. You know, we should allocate more money, you know, in my opinion, to have more cooperation with our school, like a high school environmental health project or AP class. With small amount of money we allocate to them, we can have a long-term study on our soil, what's in our soil, what's in our water, what's in our fish. If there's mercury contamination is high or not. And so, hopefully, we can find out this, the cause of the, why the breast cancer is so high in this area, why the autism is so high in this area, autism rate, and also why this asthma problem. This is what the city should do. This is public health. Everybody will be suffering, will be, will be offended, will be affected. But unfortunately, you know, our former mayor was the public relations manager for Lehigh Cement Plant now. So, that doesn't set too well in this situation. In my opinion, we have to focus on what we need to do. And I only have 15 seconds left. So, go to my website, and then look at my, my accomplishment, look at what I would do. I know the negative campaign was there. When I was first running, they say I'm too old to run. So, I really want to appreciate Orin, and Marty, and Mahesh running, so I'm not the oldest one. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, candidates. Thanks to those of you who are watching at home, and special thanks to you who came down here and supplied us with these wonderful questions for the candidates. I have a special announcement. I think this is a first in Cupertino. We are going to hold a candidate forum for the Cupertino Sanitary District. It will be held on October 21st in the Commons Clubhouse on Freedom, and I don't know if it's Avenue, Street, or Boulevard, but you can look it up, and we hope to see some of you there. Additional information on all candidates on your ballot is available at the League of Women Voters' website, SmartVoter. That's www-smartvoter.org, and you'll also find information on the two local ballot measures. If you haven't heard, there's a utility users' tax on the ballot and a parcel tax for the high school district. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1732.96][1732.96][music]